The time is now 4:00 PM and I would like to call to order the September 2nd, 2021 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for the Village of Pinehurst. I'm Jeremy Hooper and I'll be sitting in this afternoon for our Chair Cindy Burnett. First, I'd like to point out that we do have six members of our Board present here tonight, which represents a quorum and we are able to do business. I'm going to ask each member in attendance to introduce themselves, but first, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded, so please speak clearly and directly into your microphone when speaking. Absent, so go ahead to my right, go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
David Elzamora.
Philip Shoemaker.
Paul Roberts.
And absent today, we have Julia Latham, Sonya Rothstein, and Cindy Burnett. And with us from the Village liaison, we have Alexandria Rye, Alex Cameron, and Darren Burge. Thank you, guys. We're going to follow the order of our agenda. If anyone needs a copy, they're on the table in the back of the room. There's also a sign-up sheet for anyone wishing to speak or make a comment at the end of the meeting. So, the first thing on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We do not have a meeting in August, so we're going to review and approve the July 1st, 2021, minutes. Has anyone reviewed and have any changes, alterations, or corrections?
I have a comment. So, thank you, Shannon, for sending out the revised conditions. The notes I had from when we actually moved to approve the conditions was that we had combined 1 through 3 into a single condition. And that may not matter very much, but does anybody else have that, or does that make a difference? They're still broken out separately, so I just wanted to make sure.
I do think from that meeting, we did discuss early on that we were going to move them to one condition, because their wording was so close, right?
That's what I remembered, but...
And I believe that was a recommendation that we had had, since they all did relate to uses and just kind of lump it into one. The table was just prepared as such and presented in the email earlier today, just to keep a cleaner separation. But if the, I haven't looked that closely at the minutes, if the minutes accurately reflect the action and the recommendation that night, if the Board feels comfortable, then there's no real specifics if it has to be enumerated, 1, next, 2, next, 3, as long as the, as long as the minutes reflect what was actually recommended.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the rest of the minutes, so they're consistent between 1, 2, and 3, so that's the main thing.
I do have a couple of possible corrections from the minutes. So, page 3, at the bottom of the page, kind of mid of the last paragraph, it says, "Mr. Roberts asked," the panel asked, "if there was any conceptual ideas." I think we have asked in there twice. Am I reading that correctly? Is that a possible correction? Okay. All right. So, we'd like to maybe make that change. I'd propose that we make that change. And then I have one on page 5 as well.
Page 5?
On page 5 of the second paragraph, about three sentences in, it says, "In fact, the organization has been contracting." Is that an incomplete sentence? Is there something else that should be said in that sentence? So, the two sentences before and the sentence after, it just doesn't, in my mind, just does not flow or make a point. It was there, it made possible that there should be a couple more words after it, like "been contracting so-and-so" or something involved.
Or is it saying "contracting"? Like...
Let me just read the first...
And this is in that large, second paragraph on page 5, is that right?
Sure.
Okay. How far down?
It's saying they're not growing, but contracting.
Contract, so it's contracting, it's not like we're contracting with somebody. Okay. So, in fact, the organization has been contracting, so you're talking about it's...
Contracted.
Contracted. Okay. So, that's correct, right? Okay. So, my only proposed correction is on page 3 then. Thank you for that clarification. So, with that, does anybody else have any additions or corrections? No?
One other on the bottom of page 1, Section 3A, about 2/3 of the way through that paragraph, "development of a second headquarters." Just add an "s" to that.
If there are no others, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as amended for the July 1st, 2021 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended from the July 1st, 2021, meeting.
Second. Okay, so we have a first, or, I mean, sorry, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, the minutes are passed. So, next on the agenda, we have General Business. The first item in General Business is Introduce and Discuss Form-Based Codes. So, I'll turn the meeting over to Alex and Darren and Alexandria to present and discuss form-based codes.
All right, I'll kick it off. What we're doing, we're going to do a little bit of a primer or background on form-based codes. And the importance of it right now is, as many of you know, and you've participated in, we're working on two small area plans. Those small area plans, we're proposing to incorporate form-based code concepts into it. So, we thought that ahead of us actually, as this process starts to wind down, the end of the small area planning process is going to result in form-based codes for Village Place and Piner South. That's the goal at this point. And at some point, the ordinance would come before, the plan and the ordinance will end up coming before P and Z, and then ultimately to the Council. And so, we thought it'd be nice to give you a little bit of a background on what a form-based code is, how it's used, how it looks in practice, and just some of the basic parameters behind it, just kind of a learning experience. We at staff level are not experts at form-based codes. That's why, part of the reason, that's why we've hired a contracted consultant to work on that as part of the small area plan. But we're not experts, we understand it, but writing it, as you've seen, if you've looked at any of the material, like the Haywood District in Asheville, they are complicated, they take a lot of illustrations, so they take, it takes a lot of work to put together a form-based code, as we'll see. Alexandria and I are going to do a little bit of a background together. She's going to start with some of the basics of what a form-based code is, and what it's not, and how it's used in theory. Just as a little bit of, not a background, but a note, with a form-based code, we're not just simply throwing out zoning. I mean, form-based code in itself is zoning. You do have some land use controls, you have development standards, but what form-based coding starts to implement is public realm standards, civic and public plaza standards, things like that, which go beyond what a normal conventional zoning district does. I've also seen, if you looked at some of the primer, there's references to how form, a lot of how form-based zoning came about, and a lot of the phrases you see is "new urbanism", things like that. And I think, you know, "new urbanism" is a word that I sometimes don't think people understand, or it's a word that should be re-coined. When we look at new urbanism, it's really vintage urbanism. It's looking at our downtowns and trying to replicate, you know, the historic downtown, whether it's Piners, Southern Pines, Aberdeen. The historic downtown was a compact mixed-use style development. You had commercial uses in the core, and then you had residential uses kind of surrounding it. So, it was a compact, mixed-use development. That's, a lot of the concepts with form-based code are incorporating that compact, mixed-use development theme. And that's what we're looking for, especially in the Village Place area, that is a more, that can effectively be an extension of the center core area, or the Village Center. And Piner South, that is more of, and we'll get into it, more of a suburban style, maybe a Turnberry, you know, that kind of, those kind of concepts, where you'd have a little more open space and like. So, with that, we're going to start on the PowerPoint presentation right now, and I'm going to turn it over to Alexandria to kick it off, and then I will close it out. All right, Alexandria.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to go over form-based code. I'm going to give a very general overview. In your agenda, you will, in that packet, you'll have a lot more in-depth information. And if you are even more curious and just that excited, I can send you all kinds of resources. So, with form-based codes, much like Darren was saying, it really is on the built environment, it's based on the public realm. I am going to start off this presentation with a quick video. There's no audio to this video, so it really is more of a visual. And this is going to show you really how form-based code can change the feel of space. So, in many areas, form-based code is really implemented when there's already a built environment, and you're really looking at to continue that characteristic and that feel of the community. So, in this, you can see how keeping the form and continuing that form can make that space have the character that's desired. So, instead of having outward-facing residential, you should turn it to where it orients towards So, this really kind of shows you too, the example of if zoning, traditional zoning was used, setbacks now may not be what was implemented at the time when it was built, whereas form-based would really allow that infill development to meet that surrounding area, even though it may not comply with what you would traditionally think as setbacks.
And really, one of the important components of the form-based code is the in relation between the front of the building and that public right-of-way space. And that's where there's a lot of focus of the design standard is the relation of the building to the street level and the public realm itself.
And that's actually where you get the buzz verbiage of "new urbanism," is because that was the traditional style of development, was creating that human scale and creating places and spaces where the...
Form-based code has been described as the DNA of livable communities. They do this by helping cities create neighborhoods and business districts that are...
You guys are getting college credits on form-based codes. I don't think we need that right now. All right, so, and this kind of gives you a great visual on traditional zoning versus that form-based code. And really, with the traditional zoning, you have use as your primary objective. You're checking that, you're verifying that, that is the majority of what that code is about. And then you have your design regulations, and then it turns into form. So, it's like, what is the area around it? How does that play into the design and the use? Whereas with form-based zoning, you don't necessarily lose those components, however, the focus is really form. And then you come into that design, and then you look at the use. So, you're not necessarily losing any kind of regulation when it comes to use, it's just not the primary focus. With form-based codes, this is kind of where Darren really touched on, the relationship between the building facades and the public realm, the form and mass of buildings in relation to one another, and the scale and type of street and blocks. So, again, it kind of comes back to that infill and to that development, and to just preserving that characteristic, the way that it was when it was originally developed. And I do want to touch on, "the regulation and standards in form-based codes are presented in both words and clearly drawn diagrams and other visuals." That's incredibly important when you're implementing form-based code, because having that visual really clearly communicates the intent of what your objective is. And form-based codes are not to be confused with design guidelines or general statements of policy. Form-based codes are regulated and not advisory. So, that's something to keep in mind, is it's not just a suggestion, this would then be implemented as we currently have a zoning. And it's completely customizable, based on, again, your vision.
And just before we move on on that, the whole customizable aspect, that's the process that we're going through with the small area plan. We will have it, the form-based code will be tailored to the needs and the visions that we're trying to achieve in those areas. So, when I send you a tool, like, I'm sending you a model, Asheville, I'm sending you Davidson, they're just examples of how that community sees the development that it wants in the area. And what I'm trying to get you to understand or to look at is how that tool is used. You see the, with the Asheville, when you see the heavy amount of illustrations in there, you still see land use control, you see setbacks, you see lot size, but it's just that the tool of how they use it is kind of, is what we're trying, what we're trying to propose for these two areas. Alexandria?
And to continue with that visual conception, the conventional zoning you'll see, it is primarily made up of your density, your floor ratio, setback parking requirements, and of course, the maximum building height and specifications. That's how that checklist kind of runs right now. So, when you're looking at, you know, this visual, and then you kind of think about, okay, well, if we go away from that and we go into more design guidelines, it's more of a suggestion, and then you can implement conventional zoning requirements, and then also have a little bit more focus on the surface articulation. However, when you start bringing in the form-based, you really are looking at the existing, the streets and the building types, and building to the lines. And then you're focusing on, how is the characteristic in the developed area around it, and how does this fit into that? Does that match? Does it flow? Does it continue? And does it meet the intent of what we want in this area?
And before we move off of that, the illustration there shows kind of a compact mixed-use development. You have the commercial frontage along that primary street as you go to the right on that drawing. It's moving down to, you can see some single-family detached, I see some single-family attached to the rear. The one thing that I think to me is a little bit out of place on this particular diagram is the scale and mass of that building in the, on the left part of that, where it looks like some type of commercial apartment-style building. That one looks like it's just a little tall. I would have probably read, we didn't do these illustrations, by the way. I would have probably scaled that down just a little bit, but...
But I do kind of want to kind of go back here. So, it's showing, you know, if you have a residential area, or even as you're transitioning into some of the more mixed-use areas, that zoning, traditional zoning goes, it makes it kind of a hard line. And then when you get into more of the design guidelines, that does help to soften the transition, but as Darren was saying, when you look at the form-based code, there's a smooth transition. You have a multitude of uses here, but at the human level, if you're standing in the middle of it, it isn't overwhelming. And this is another illustration that really supports that. And you can see the transition from your more very nature-preserved park kind of use all the way as you kind of step into these other densities and other uses, and how that's developed, how that's created. And you see that transition along the top image here, as well as the vertical image. And you see the T1, T2, T3, that's typically how form-based codes are broken down, and each one of these areas has its own, where you bring in the hybrid, you can bring in those zoning regulations. So, you can have permitted uses, you can have setbacks that are generally set in like a, in the scale of things.
And this is an important concept. When you start to look at form-based zoning, the transects, which these are called, you go to the T1 transect, that's kind of the more rural area, that would be more of our R210-type areas, then you're going into T2 to T3, which would be, could be the two-gated communities. And then as you're getting closer to, you know, part of T3 and T4, then you're getting into those R10 areas, get into T4 and T5, then you're getting adjacent to the Village Center area. T6 would be that could potentially be the Village Center area at present, or the Village Place area, because it just shows kind of the intensity, the development pattern changing as you get closer into the more urbanized area. I'm good.
All right, so there's five main elements when it comes to form-based code as you're developing and creating these documents for implementation. You have your regulating plan, and that plan is typically a map that shows the regulated and designated areas. So, when you're doing form-based code, you don't have to do the entire jurisdiction, you can do specific areas. And as Darren was saying, we are looking at more concentrated areas.
With the regulating plan, that is akin to kind of a zoning map. It's a zoning map for the form-based area, based on some of the transect concepts that were on the previous screen.
Number two is public standards. So, this goes back to the relationship with the street and the human, and then the building. So, the specifications, the elements in the public realm, the sidewalks, travel lanes, on-street parking, street yard trees, and street furniture, so interactive elements as well. And this will show you, these diagrams are actually from a draft document that we have, kind of showing the typical commercial elevation and the typical residential elevation.
And this is kind of the critical, one of the critical elements of what a form-based code is. And what where conventional zoning lacks is, it really doesn't have any public standards for what that right-of-way looks like, what those sections look like. So, that's where the, that's where the form-based code comes into play, and it really becomes that inner reaction between the street section and the front of that building, because that is, that is that public realm environment. It's the interface between the public and those buildings.
Do we have any questions so far? I don't want to just talk at you. Nothing? All right.
We...
Okay, all right.
See if you answer them before I ask.
Okay. So, three would be your building standards. So, this is where you really are, have the opportunity to bring in some of that more specific regulation and controlling. And you can do a lot of things with the configuration, the function of the buildings, meaning the use, and the shape, that essentially will shape that public realm. And it really has to take into consideration, you know, what is out there, what do you want there, how do you want it developed, if it is going to be developed, or how do you want it maintained? And so, this will allow you to really put in the intentions. So, if it is, well, I'll get into some examples, I have them listed. Don't want to get ahead of myself. Of course, then you have the administrative level. So, there's a clearly defined and streamlined application process when it comes to form-based code, because it takes away a lot of the red tape, per se, and it allows for the applicant to kind of move through the development. So, if it is, let's say, a perfect example would be like a traditional lot, infill lot, there's a 30-foot setback, front setback. That might be difficult today to do that, whereas if you were to kind of move forward with this, this allows staff to help with that form-based by looking at what that area calls for, what the regulations are, and how is that particular design going to fit in if it were to move forward. And of course, five is going to be your definitions. This is where, again, coming into defining what those rules and regulations that you're trying to implement, what the vision is, showing the imagery, showing examples, showing sketches, diagrams, scales, all of that, so that way, it's user-friendly. Anybody who picks it up can then clearly understand what the intent is and how to move forward with a proper design. This goes back to some of those examples, additional elements and options, these are some of the standards that you can bring in. So, again, architectural standards, you can bring in the regulations and controlling, any kind of external look as far as material, or you can even go as far as percentage and the type of materials. You can then go into your landscape standards, and bringing in a lot of the design and plant material on the private property, and consider how that will affect and impact the public space. Signage standards and regulations, you can put in any kind of information on the material, the illumination size. So, it's very similar to what we have now, it's just adding in another layer when it comes to that form-based. Environmental resources, so regulating and controlling stormwater, and any other environmental impacts that have concerns, flood plain, floodway. And then, of course, the annotation text illustrations, again, I'm going to keep reiterating, imagery is key. Showing and having that visualization is very important with form-based code.
I do anticipate that we will have most of these elements included in the form-based code. Architectural standards, as we see in a moment, are, I think, are really critical to this code and to, you know, the place-making that we're trying to achieve in these two areas. Again, especially the Village Place area as being kind of that, that extension of the Village Center. I think we really need to get it right from an architectural standpoint. I think we really need to be prescriptive in that regard, and the form-based code allows us to do that.
But going back to talking about the hybrid form-based code, the hybrid approach combines the graphic orientation and the street frontage site configuration provisions and form-based models with the use of provisions and development standards and design guidelines. So, it's really mirroring the two concepts, your form-based and our current zoning, and kind of bringing the two together to find that happy median. And this sort of gives you somewhat of a visual understanding and knowing how that hybrid would work. The districts for use that have certain types of regulations you can implement, the street types, and then taking the design guidelines into consideration, but really finding how, where you want that weighted focus to be. Hybrid codes are basically an integration of the conventional zoning, and then with the use of graphics and urban design standards, you can bring that all back to address your setbacks, your parking placement materials and architecture features. So, you're really, again, tying in the two together. I know it sounds repetitive, but that's what's very important when it comes to understanding what a hybrid would be when you're using both codes.
And the two examples that we included are examples of hybrid codes. One has more conventional in it than does the other, but they both have characteristics of conventional zoning ordinance within them.
This is going to give you some of the key topics that are in preparing for a hybrid form-based. This isn't a new concept. Actually, a lot of communities that implement form-based code now, it is a hybrid. And there are, based on my research the last couple of days, there are hundreds of communities all over the place that want to show off their hybrid form-based codes. But the process for deciding is, the form-based code should apply where, and should clearly distinguish where to leave the use-based zoning. So, you've really got to show that map, that original map I showed you, that shows kind of, here's the whole area, but this is where form-based code is going to be implemented. That's got to be very clear, and that's going to help with that hybrid structure. How to structure the table of contents to ensure that walkability urban development is the default, or is as much of a default as drivable suburban development? So, that goes back to what Darren was saying, is it goes back to the public realm. Assessing existing regulations and effective collaborating with form-based code elements. Integrating the visioning public process, which is what has been happening with some of these other plans that we're working on. Different ways to apply the land use transect without compromising it. So, that goes back to the images... Sorry, I'm a visual person. That goes back to this. So, it's really showing, how do we put this in effect without compromising what we have and what we want? How use tables within transect form-based zones need to be different than the use-based zones. So, that is going to change some in the way that it's worded, based on the different zones that you have in that transect map. So, where we have like R10, R12, that may change to be a more general statement, where it's a certain density residential, or low-density residential, is a generic, we utilize that. So, that would encompass a range, and it would give you a guide under that. And that's where the illustrations would really come into play, under form-based code, to show you, okay, so this area can only have this much density. And the role of subdivision standards and ways to address variance in special permits, that can still be implemented under form-based code, that doesn't go away. It just comes in, and there's a different level of review, because you're... It just comes in and there's a different level of review, because you're, you're not looking, you're not checking the box, okay, setbacks, okay, impervious surface, landscape, you're really looking at what your intent is. All right, I'm going to hand it over to you to go through.
I think another thing to think about, and one of some of the inspiration that we've had behind, um, the one, the one to move to a form-based, a more of a form-based code for some of these areas, is, first, it relates back to the comprehensive plan. We did, we did talk extensively about their, about investigating the use of form-based codes and, and pattern books, things like that. But the other, the other thing that we've been looking at and watching is, is the, the community survey, that we're seeing the satisfaction of quality of development, the percentage of people satisfied with the quality of development in the community seems to be going off a little, it, it's been going down. And what we think, what we know, that, that the current PDO doesn't really, there's not a lot, a lot in there that assures quality or ensures quality. It regulates development, it has some, some, regulates development, it does a good job at that, but does it do a good job of prescribing the vision for what the community wants development in this area, in the community? I don't think it does that great of a job doing that. I think the form-based code will help. I think our, our HBC guidelines do help. We have some other documents that, that do help the comp plan, but we don't have a code that really prescribes the quality that we're looking for, the style of development that we're looking for in these two areas. I'm going to go over a couple of pictures to try and take you back to show when we talk about new urbanism and, and some of the concepts that we'll, that we're looking to incorporate. So first, start with the general plan of Pinehurst. You can see it has a lot of those strong concepts. It's, it's got a public realm aspect to it. You see the, 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 the street tree-lined, uh, tree-lined streets. You have public plazas, civic plazas, Village Green being one of those. Then you have these little triangular areas, they can be, uh, green space as well. So, you know, the, our old plan, the, the original plan of the community has a lot of those aspects of a, of a compact urban development. And, and that's really what, you know, newer, new urbanism gets to, is this vintage-style development pattern. So here, that was, that was the original plan. I think this is nineteen, about midnight, nineteen fifty-seven, Jack, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, so this starts to show it as the area started to, uh, densify from an urban standpoint. You can see down Chinkapin, uh, the, the more commercial structures, and you've got Market Street. So this, this is kind of like that center area for the transect. As you move out a little bit, you get less dense, so you're getting less dense as you, as you move out into these areas. I'm going to put this pointer on. So as you're, as you're moving out to here, you're getting out to that, that more rural part of the, of the transect, and it just gets heavier as you get into, into, more into the village center. Here's a, here's one of the first aerial photos of Pinehurst, and you can see that this is a compact mixed-use development. It's, it's in its early stages, but you have your, you have your commercial buildings in here, going out along the transect to, to single-family residential. You can still see, you can see that strong public realm concept where that terraced area was, was a very heavy, uh, tree-lined, uh, tree-lined and landscaped area. Those are concepts that get included in, in the, into a form-based code.
Every street, every street in Pinehurst had sidewalks on both sides, and that continued forever until, uh, well, until recently, really, quite honestly.
Yeah.
And they're still platted that way.
They are, and it, it lends itself to being a good, efficient, small, compact development, because you can, I mean, you're in the village center, it's very easy to walk around, it feels very safe, except sometimes at night when you can't see. But, you know, we're taking care of some of, some of those areas, but it really, it really, you know, that public realm was a strong component of the Olmsted, of the Olmsted plan. Now, as you get out, you know, west of NC five, that gets, you know, that, it's not very walkable when you, when you compare it to, to the village center. Again, just showing, this is a more recent photo, you can see, um, it's not a strong, in, especially you get down Chinkapin, that strong public realm component, now the buildings, the character of the buildings are there. That's kind of what we'd like to emanate in, in, especially in the village place area, this style of building, it is a, it is a very good-looking style of building, just because it's, architecturally, it's very interesting, but the public realm, it could be updated, but it, it's hard to update it when you're, when you're so narrow. So it wasn't, it wasn't built to incorporate some of those concepts that we'll get at some visuals that I'll show you later. Again, this shows that mixed, kind of, the quality of the architecture and the character. It doesn't all have to be the same, but the, the, the quality of the, the quality of the construction, the architecture, it just looks, it, it has a good variety and good interaction with, with the public street in front of it. Same thing here, just another example of how, how the character, how the character of architecture really does matter, and, and you can see how, how long the, the character of these buildings has last, and they, and they still have a lot of character and, and provide, and add to the downtown environment. Then we get a little bit later period, and this is another style of, of development along Market Street. And this is something that, this again, as the community has, gets more mature, you get more people, and then now you're getting a little bit more density of development, where you have zero lot lines, uh, along the sidewalk, you have zero lot lines between buildings. And this is, again, a concept that, that could easily be incorporated into the village place area, because it wouldn't be out of character, uh, with the, with the development in the area. What you don't have here, again, is that strong public realm. You've got a public, you've got a public sidewalk, but there's not a lot of interest in, in the sidewalk itself. These buildings are beautiful, though. You have multiple entrances, you've got these nice windows, uh, there's a lot of articulation and fenestration in these buildings. That is the quality, it's a quality that we can assure with the existing, with the existing, um, PDO. We just, we can't replicate, we could replicate it, but we'd have to do some, some dramatic changes to the PDO, but you.
Apartments above.
And apartments above, mixed use. And that's where it gets into, where the, where the form-based code gets into a little bit, is, is, you know, that vertical mix of uses. A lot of them will say, well, we want a commercial ground front, but above it, you can have offices or you can have residential. And you can see strong, some strong sign controls in that area. You've got the blade signs, you've got the, the, kind of the, a likeness of all the other sign bands that are in there. Uh, this would be along Chinkapin, what is it, the Drum and Quill now? So just the quality, the, the character of these buildings are something that, right now, we can't really prescribe with, with the, with the current PDO, with our current PDO requirements. So can you imagine if, if, you know, go to another one? If something came in and wiped, wiped the map clean along Market Street, would the PDO result in something coming back akin to this? And I, with the current PDO requirements, probably not, but the style of development, this character of development, these buildings are all very well-defined, they've got a top and a, they've got three distinct areas on them, the roof, the second floor and first, that are, are, again, relating well to the street. There's a lot of fenestration there. Um, again, public realm, just because of the, the narrowness of the street, it was tough, it's tough to get that, that wide public realm, but again, this shows the character of development. Same thing, just a, it looks like a different time period, but you can, again, the buildings create the character. The interrel, interrelation between the front of the building and the street is key if you're trying to create, uh, uh, create a special place. I, I wanted to put this building in, this, uh, the theater building, I wanted to put this picture in here to show that apparently Pinehurst has always had a parking problem. So, so you can, so you can see when this was, it looks, it doesn't look much different than it does, uh, any day down there. But it, and also does show the scale and character of, of the theater building over there. And again, it's a, you can have buildings like that in the appropriate places. Pinecrest, uh, showing, showing in the foreground here, and you can see that heavy, that heavy band of landscaping between the buildings and the street. And then as the area's developed more towards the south, you can see where the, where the fire station is over here, and, and this development, it started to, they started to move away from that concept. So there's a distinct difference, you know, between the, the public realm over here, and they started incorporating maybe some more setbacks, and this along, uh, along, in front of the Pinehurst, or Pinecrest, sorry. This, I, I found this today, again, Jack, what was, do you know what this building was?
I think that's the Chalfont Hotel that was on Route five.
Oh, that's, that's it? Okay. Well, that, that, that is appropriate, because that is in our small area plan area, so it was an example of, of the architecture in the area, and something that I just, I found it was interesting. What did I say? It has a nice dormer, it's got a Greek Revival look, so I just thought that was a, just a nice building to include in that, in the, just something to look, again, showing the previous quality of development. This would be Chinkapin again, now that, now that, the development itself hasn't changed much, there's still, the street, the storefronts look nice and all that, and they, and they interact very well with, with the sidewalk, but again, the public realm is kind of weak in here. You don't have areas to sit, a lot of areas to mill back and forth, benches and, and alike, and a lot of that's because of the, of the width of that area. Now, this is kind of, this, this is a rendering, this was in a, a presentation for the small area plan, uh, Public Workshop Two, I believe. So this was a, this was a bird's-eye rendering of, of, of the area. Here's the brewery right over here, you can see the smoke stacks, the brewery stack over here, this is looking towards Magnolia. So this is that, kind of that crossroads where we're, we're trying to get some, propose that there'd be potentially a boutique hotel, restaurants, retail shops in this particular area. Now, the reason I'm showing it like this is black and white, is this is how, this is, this is how we think of it with conventional, with conventional zoning. It's really, from our standpoint, it's more black and white. Now, when we go, this is the thought, the concept that we have with form-based coding, then the form-based coding adds the color, it adds the character to the area, and this is, this is something that, again, the, the, the current PDO with its current, current requirements wouldn't prescribe development like this. We're hoping that the, that the form-based code, again, we still need to work on it, can prescribe that with building type, with architectural standards, things like that. I think that would be good on that. So any questions? Right away? I'm open, we're open.
I guess a, um, a concern would be, and you meant, you know, enforcement, it needs to fit overall, but it just seems to open it to more subjectivity. Um, I mean, you, you have, I guess, the ideas, but.
That is not the idea. The idea is that it's actually, there's less subjectivity, because there's more, the standards are more well-developed, that it's easy for, it's easy for an administrator to look at it, go, it meets, it meets these requirements. And let me get to the, I'll get to the Haywood. Because I think that, where'd it go, where'd it go? Where am I? Oh, there we are. All right. So that, and that, David, that's a, that's a, that's a good discussion point. So this is the, the Asheville-Haywood District one, and what it, so when we talk, oof, sorry. So this is the regulating plan. So this is what we'd have for our two districts. So you can see that this regulating plan, it has different districts that are established, core, expansion, corridor, traditional, live-work-town. So it, it has elements of that zoning ordinance, of zoning, but it's in the form-based code nature. This we start to, this we start to talk about lots, lot sizes, outdoor many spaces. So this is a sixty-five-page code for this area, and part of it is, it's very prescriptive. So there, there's a lot of standards in here to meet setbacks, and these are just general standards, where the building can be. You can see here, and over here, and on the lower right here, where the little checkmarks of, yeah, that, this is what we should be doing, and then this is what we shouldn't be doing. And these are all, these are all enforceable as part of the form-based code. Then we get into the thing, how do you measure roof? What's the pitch roof, flat roof? We don't, I don't think we, we don't have that type of measurement. Uh, where am I? Then, then it starts to develop into districts, rules for each of the districts, eighty percent of each upper story must meet the minimum upper story height provision, so it's very prescriptive. Then you go down here, you can see, this is where you start to talk about transparency, what kind of transparency you want in different areas.
May I, may I interrupt you really quickly?
Sure.
The transparency, so, uh, I actually have a question about that specifically. There may or may not be a municipality around here who has put forth code that says industrial buildings have to have a certain amount of transparency on them. So my question to you all, what point does practicality meet design, where if you're putting glass in front of an industrial building and you've got people with forklifts running into it all the time, and you mean municipality says, not my problem? So where comes into balance? Can somebody come in and ask you for a waiver of that? I mean, how would that be approached? I mean, it's, I, I've read the pitfalls of this. So they say it's the Steve Jobs approach. Here's what I want it to look like, it's your problem to make it work, the engineer's on the inside. Um, so, so that's my question. So something like that with the transparency. If an industrial building's requiring all this glass, but it doesn't make sense in an industrial building to have all that glass, how does somebody approach the village to request a waiver of that?
Well, I think you'd still, because it'd be an adopted code, you'd still have to go through the variance procedure, or maybe not. I haven't thought about it.
But I don't think the definition of variance would allow you to apply, I mean, because what's the hardship?
Correct. So there, there has to be, again, it hasn't been written yet, so we, so the modifications aspect of it, I don't.
Yeah. And that's the reason I've asked, because I've run into this. I mean, and, and it's, it's a real-world scenario. I mean.
You're right. I mean, it starts to look very much like, although a little bit different than the guidelines for the HBC district, which are, which specify design standards and so forth, and don't incorporate a lot of the PDO issues, but they do, they do address some of this, this type of, uh, subjective, if you will, uh, design type of activity, so.
And these are not.
In fact, the, the new core, a good percentage of the new core area is already incorporated into the local historic district. So you're going to have local historic district guidelines, architectural standards and so forth, on top of a form-based code. I'm not sure which will come out on top.
Well, if, if you look at the commercial development standards for, in, in the historic guidelines, they're not, they're not robust, so I don't, I don't think, I think these will, these will be above that level from a, they'll, they'll have to incorporate that concept into them, but I think this will do a better job of actually visualizing the development that would be appropriate from a commercial development standpoint in, in the district. So we've had this discussion before in, in some of the commercial, in some of the commercial aspects. We think that there could be a little bit more, we could, we think the standards could actually be enhanced. We could actually use the form-based code to enhance those guidelines.
And if I can chime in too, also keep in mind that the form-based plan, that goes where you want it. So if you're putting it over an industrial area, then you really do have to give consideration to what is it that we want developed in this area, and how will that look, how will that feel from a human level? Whereas the area, I think that they're really concentrating on, it's not primarily industrial. So that concern's brought into place when you're laying out that map and you're kind of figuring out where this is going to go. And as far as the two, with, with the historic preservation and form-based, they actually work together as a team, so you're not going to have one that contradicts the other. They're really going to have to go together and blend well, so that you're not necessarily one-upping in complication or in, uh, requirements, but that you're, you're taking into consideration, all right, this is the historic district, that's how that feels. Form-based code may go outside of the historic district, so we need to make sure that we're complementing the historic district where that jurisdiction is, but also keep in mind, what is this going to look like outside of that?
Well, and, and I think to add to that is, when, when we have a commercial development that goes through, um, take a look at fifteen Chinkapin, take a look at Lodge USGA, they had to go through, get their COA, but they also have to come through and meet PDO requirements. So we'd have to, the way we do it currently, we, we have to make those two mesh. So that, that has to be an important consideration in the, in the FPC. Getting back to Philip, though, is it, you know, you have to get back to, is, was it appropriate to, to require that, that level of, of transparency in an industrial park? That, that, that's part of, that, that was on them to, to actually think through that and think, wow, this could happen. So they obviously didn't get a lot of input from anybody when they're developing that, that section of, of the ordinance. I think, you know, when we start to look at transparency, the idea between, behind transparency is we can have retail, we can have. is we can have retail, we can have restaurants, we can have things like that where you need to see people at the street level. It's not, I think the idea that we're not creating large industrial districts with, with this code, so...
Well, we don't have a lot of industrial, I was just an extreme example. But, but it, my, I guess the overall, my overall concern is just making sure that design standards also meet functionality. There's gotta be some sort of middle of the road, you know? That's, that's really my, my goal with that topic.
And that, and that's, that's agreed. And remember, this, there's going to be a public process. So as we, when we move forward and we, and something's presented, that's where we have some of these discussions. And we have, if something's not working, we have the ability to amend the code, the ability to adjust the code. We always know that when, when we adopt something, sometimes it's not working the way we want. So we, so we make those adjustments based on some experience. So we're hoping we get it right the first time, but we know that we're gonna have to fine-tune along the way.
Do you know to what extent form-based codes in North Carolina have run afoul of the legislature's desire that municipalities not regulate architectural features, at least on housing?
Only applies to the residential, anything that's regulated by the one- and two-family building code. Commercial, non-residential structures, it does not apply. And it does not apply within the historic districts. So in, inasmuch as we might have some, well, some of these areas that were single families going up within the historic district, so the historic rules are gonna apply and would, as would the form-based code. So form-based codes are actually, they're statutory allowed in the state. That has not, as of yet, been adjusted.
Hey Darren, has there any been any discussion of, you know, picking a block in Pinehurst today? You know, the, the small area plans, obviously, is where this is focused at. But, you know, kinda looking at the designs, getting with the people who live there and say, hey, here's what we'd like to do. You know, the tree-lined streets, the lampposts, the sidewalks, you know, pick a small portion, you know, from stop sign to stop sign on Everett, Fields, wherever, you know, and, and do it, you know? And then you may have momentum of where residents, you know, in the town wanna see the rest of Pinehurst done. Now, obviously, someone's gonna have to foot the bill. I'm not so sure if the tax rates are high enough to, for the village to foot the bill. You know, vice, waiting for, you know, private property owners to come together with investors and contractors, say, hey, let's design this. I would imagine, you know, what we've seen come through here lately, there's little that's put into the aesthetics other than the home itself, you know, because that is a investor, investors, or contractors who are giving up profit, you know, for something that it's hard to sell. It's hard to sell a sidewalk, or a lamppost, or a tree. You know, but if you would take an existing area in Pinehurst and say, hey, over the next five years, we want to, you know, put, I don't wanna say form-based, because I know about as much of it from listening to you for the last hour, you know, and reading the material that I had, but, you know, hey, let's design the street that we want, you know, these two small areas to look at, look like. Let's get with residents and see if they're willing, you know, to participate in this, and see if you can get 200 meters of space designed out with sidewalks, a bike lane, you know, the way you want it, and see where it goes from there.
And we are, the small area planning process is leading to that. It's not like we, we have outreach. We're, we're trying to get people to participate in the process. We talked to some of the property owners, that's, you know, that's some of the stakeholder discussions that we've had. So we are, there's a very public process as part of the small area planning process. All these things are being laid out, and we're having these discussions. Sometimes people don't wanna engage with, they just don't, they can't, they don't engage with us. But we have heard from a number of, a number of people within, within these areas. But I can't, we're not going knocking on each person's door to do it. We try and do it through this, through this very public process that we have. And we, I think we do a pretty good job of advertising the fact that we're having these meetings, we have a project website set up. And so I think we have a pretty good engagement process set up, but we can, we can only do so much to get people, people to engage. The, the one way to do it is we could, we could tell them that there's gonna be a multiple family building set up on, on the block, and it would probably bring up hundreds of people, and that, we could get, we could, we could talk to them. But we try. I mean, we do, well, we do a good job of trying to get people out there. So your point is well-taken, and I think we're trying to do that. I think the small area plans are gonna have a lot of these components. So it's leading everything, everything that the consultant is doing is based on a lot of the public input that we've heard, heard to date, looking at the comprehensive plan, looking at some of the, the pet and bike plan and all those things, and they're melding those all together into this final report. So what I would request is just be patient, and this next phase of the, of the small area planning process versus Phase 3, we're getting towards that final report. So, and, but, and that's a buildup of all that previous input.
And I think we do ourselves a disservice when we review plans, and then the, either the contractor or the owner of the property says, hey, I don't wanna put a sidewalk here, here's the reasons why. And they come up with a bunch of excuses, and the real excuse is because they have to pay for it. You know, so if we're moving, you know, and I, I think a lot of people are gonna, you know, think this is an pleasing, you know, very nice way to have your roads lined and the access and the walkability, ability to bike, ability, you know, for children to walk down a sidewalk vice a road, is a pretty good idea, you know, but someone has to take the first step, you know? At least here, you know, we can start looking at, if you're gonna go do, you know, a, an area, you know, I use the Presbyterian church, you know, I think we allow them not to put sidewalks in, knowing that later in, you know, five, 10 years from now, you know, the citizens of Pinehurst will pay for sidewalks because the church or the contractor didn't wanna put them in. So if we start looking at, you know, enforcing some of those things, that gets us closer to where we think the residents of Pinehurst wanna go, you know, that would certainly be a step in the right direction. You know, I think if you, you know, again, take your design, pick a corner, you know, have the sidewalks go to nowhere, but now you've designed that corner, I think it would get a lot of momentum, people would start looking at in a favorable way. Okay, this is not, you know, I'm not talking about how we need to, you know, I know you're focused on the small area build-out here, and these comments are general comments, you know, if this is the standard or the approach that we wanna go towards.
Well, and I, from that standpoint, it, as we get outside of the small area planning areas, then you're looking at a majority of residential areas. And a lot of the concepts that are applying in, don't apply as well in, in kinda these lesser dense residential neighborhoods than they do in, in the Village Place area and in, and in the, and in the Pinehurst South area. I can see, we have two large catalyst sites where, if we can get the right conditions going, we could, we could start, you know, getting this plan implemented rather well, because you have, you know, between us with the public services facility, you've got, you've got the Moore County water tank sites, that's, that's no longer needed. That could be, that could be that first area to do what, what you're talking about. And that's gonna require somebody to come in. Now, we have two large pieces of property, but that will give a lot of flexibility for somebody to come in and be able to implement this plan. I had a train of thought and it just went away. It'll come back to me, sorry. Sorry.
I had the same question, so, you know, that whole approach of nail it and scale it, right? You get it right and then, then grow it. So that area, I think that you had already shown a concept of, I think that's probably one of the better areas to do it, because it is a little more dense or has potential for the density. Another challenge that I've read about these, I'm gonna play devil's advocate, so don't shoot me when I walk ahead at night, but it's that local economies that don't grow as quickly, this tends to be a challenge. So do we anticipate the local economy and businesses, the commercial areas, growing quickly enough to implement this to make, to make the positive impact? You know, you all see what's on the docket, that we don't see it, you know, until it's ready for us, but maybe just comment on that a little bit?
I mean, from a, from a growth standpoint, there is, there's room, there's absorption room in the market. We know that based on the, based on the market analysis at the time. We know that there, that there's room in the market, because we get contacted, you know, the reason why we elevated Pinehurst South forward a little bit and put the moratorium on it, was because we were getting more and more contacts about things wanting to, wanting to happen in that area. We didn't move fast enough on the Pinehurst South, that resulted in the subdivision being developed down there. But that's part of the reason, there's constant growth, there's constant, we get constant development contacts. Same thing, same thing is occurring in the, in the Village, in the Village Place area, not to the same level, because the characteristics of Village Place are a little bit different. There's, the properties are small, so somebody, anybody who wants to go in there is gonna have to, have to work with somebody to acquire a number of properties to get a decent redevelopment. But, you know, between what, what the, what the village has and what the county has, we do have a, we do have a catalyst-style site. And I would, you know, the train of thought that I lost when I was talking to Paul was, a plan is only as good as you're willing to stick to the, the plan itself and implement what's, what's in those, what's in the plan. So if we move forward, adopt this plan, you know, we need to, we need to implement it. And that's why part of, you know, part of, part of it, to take it away from a, from a legislative and make it an administrative process, that takes away some of those discussions. All right, let's not, let's not put the sidewalks in, let's not, let's not do this, this time. Let's, you know, if, if it's in that form-based code, and it, and you can move forward if it's within the form-based code, it takes, it takes out that, that process that we, that we go through when we do an administrative review before, well, not even administrative review, that's more of a conditional zoning or something like that. Because administrative review, you have to meet the requirements. So, I had a long string of thought with that one, too. But it's, it's really, if we have a very long, a very prescribed, form-based code, it should be easy to implement, and there shouldn't be a lot of outs or modifications that are allowed. This is what the developer needs to do, this is what you can do to get your permit, and, you know, we, we should be holding the line when we're actually going through if there's any type of amendment process.
So Darren, what in our current development ordinances prohibits that type of development? We just looked at there.
It doesn't, it doesn't prohibit it, but it doesn't prescribe it.
Darren, I was gonna kinda mention something along those same lines. I was gonna say, when I think about Village Place in particular, you know, specifically over the last 20 years, where we're calling it New Core, and we've had plans and a lot of passion around it, you know, it just seems like it's been challenging for the village and somewhat difficult. Has any of those plans and some of the zoning for the area, do you think it's been somewhat of a deterrent for some of the development that we would like to see, or the community would like to see for that area? And would this help?
Well, I think this, I, I think this would help, because it establishes a good vision for the community, how that area could come together. So you see those illustrations that we've come together on, that shows any potential interest, development interest, neighborhood interest, what could come together. So I think that is, I, I think that can help. The New Core master plan was out there, I can't, you know, that was, when it was done, I, I wasn't here. But I think the plan that we're, the plan that we're putting together, I believe, is implementable. But implementable is a two-part process. There has to be, you know, you have to have the code and plan in place on one side, then you have to adopt the code, and then if there's, if there's any other types of reviews that you have to go, coming before P and Z and council, that's where, that's where sometimes the frustration will set in. That's why we try and get a strong enough form-based code. That's the idea behind the form-based code, is you have a really good rigid code that somebody comes in, they can meet the code, and you get your permit, you run through administrative review.
But it's the owner of the property that applies to develop it.
Correct.
Right? And if in fact, you know, we owning a good chunk of property there, we could in fact put together a master plan right now, that, that looks very much like what we just saw, and say, okay, we're gonna do it only parcel by parcel or block by block, and we're gonna contract that with developers. But there's nothing really stopping us, should we decide to go ahead and implement that plan in the area that we own, you know, where Public Works is, right now. Is that correct?
That's correct, sure. But you also wanna, you know, you, you, yeah, you're absolutely correct, but that's why, why we're also doing a small area plan for that entire area, because we, we wanna visualize how, what, even if it's on a public services property, how does that relate to development that could come to the south, could come to the east, could come to the west? You wanna know how that, how that development is going to fit in. So you have to have a vision for that neighborhood. You don't wanna just have a vision for one small portion of that area.
Yeah, well, that makes sense. I mean, you want a, a general concept of the entire neighborhood, but you control the ability to, to put the, the initial development in place, or at least the village does, if it chooses to do that.
If it chooses to do that, but that becomes the cat, that, when I say it's a catalyst site, it's a catalyst site because it's large enough, say we vacate, we vacate that site, that is now a large enough site where, you know, we've got this plan forward and we go out to do some type of master RFP or something like that, now we have this plan to say, this is what the vision that we wanna accomplish in the area. And I think the market is strong enough, and the market will continue to get strong based on the growth, the continued growth that we're seeing, not just, not just Pinehurst, but you've, the, just the region of the state, you know, people are continuing to come in here. There's still, there's always gonna be growth pressure in the area. And a lot, the other comments that we've heard during the small area planning processes are, why do you wanna develop all these areas? Why do you wanna develop all these areas? It's really, we're managing the growth that is going to occur down the line, because these are all, right now, these are all, most of them are, are all zoned for, for development. And if there will continue to be growth pressure, we just wanna make sure that the growth that occurs on these parcels meets, meets our, the vision that we see for an area. Now, Jack, I wanna get back to this, this particular photo, or this particular slide. And this, you know, when we talk about, and this is very basic, because we do have a, we do have some standards, but, you know, our PDO, this is kinda like our PDO standard for development. So that's, you know, there's, it's just, it doesn't have a lot, it doesn't require a lot. Then, then you moved, darn it. Then you move to this, and this, you know, we do have some of these elements, but we really wanna get to this element. This is what we don't have. We don't have a lot of those architectural requirements, things like that, that really prescribe the building type, the massing, the scale, all that. And that's what we're looking, that's, that's the beauty of using the form-based code. And if you go, and just let me go through and show you just some final examples here in, in this Haywood District. You can, you can see, it is, there is a lot of prescription in how you handle development, stoops, courtyards, all that kinda stuff. But then it gets, then it gets down into districts themselves. So you can see, this is kinda the visual, the, the visual idea of how they want this particular, this is their core district to look. And you can see they have, you know, the, the street, the street area, the public realm, and how these buildings are all relating to the street. Then what they use is they use these, these images to show, this is the style of development that won, won in the area. I'm not sure if they have a design, a lot of, a lot of places that have form-based codes have a design review committee, that any of the development that comes through goes through a design review committee. So we'll have to revisit that. But here, so now it starts to talk about the, the street cross-section. So these are all, you know, these are all the elements that we're looking to incorporate into, into, into what, what we're doing with the smaller area plans. But you can see, this is a 65-page plan for, again, activation height, it's very prescriptive. And then it goes into another district. So that's the kinda, that's the kind of standards and the kind of vision that, that we foresee with, with the form-based codes that we're working on.
Which one is this? Which, which, is this Davidson, or is this...
No, this is, this is...
Asheville?
This is Asheville.
Okay.
Davidson is, I think it was less heavy on illustrations. I think this is, this is a much better example of, of a form-based code, the Davidson one was just another example of a form-based code. I was just trying to, and, and it's a hybrid code. I was just trying to show you, you know, the differences in the code. When I talked to Jason up there, I think he said they did that in-house. This was, I believe, done in-house, but Asheville has a pretty, has a pretty big planning team up to work on these things.
Darren, the other thing that may be a good idea to do, too, since both of these areas that you've identified for form-based code, you know, are owned by private landowners, you know, it may be a good idea to go and look at, what was the value of the land before they implemented this? What was the value of the land after they implemented it? I would imagine when development like this comes in, I mean, it, it, look, you know, to me, I mean, I wouldn't wanna live that close to someone, that's okay, but, you know, it's appealing to a lot of people. It's very popular, and I'm sure, you know, it'd be easy to show some numbers that, hey, if you go, if you buy into this, you know, you as the private property owner, you know, the value of your land is ultimately going to increase.
No, and I think that certainly...
If that's a fact, you know?
Well...
Yeah.
Well, it depends... Well, well, it depends on what the ultimate use is. Are you, if you're going from maybe a single family or a use like that to a, to a more elevated one, like a commercial land use, I, I think naturally that's, that's going to go up higher. So you have some, you have some single-family houses, or you have some, some of those apartments over on Rattlesnake, those, they've been there for a long time. I think, you know, if we put this form-based code in place, that would allow them to upgrade that to a commercial or more multiple family, I think they get, I think that upgrades the value of that property. I think it's hard, it's hard for us to do an analysis on that without knowing what the actual development is going to be on that property. We might be able to do something. I'd, I'd have to, I could probably sketch that out, maybe on the multiple-family site. So let me think about that.
No, I was going to say, already today, there's a lot of residential mixed in, the multifamily that you just mentioned, you know, some, some residential commercial involved. And I think that we have to focus on something that, that drives it to be a little bit more cohesive together. And I think that's, what I'm gathering is this could possibly be an option to drive some cohesive zoning together, which I think is going to have to happen at Village Place.
Small, compact, mixed-use development. That's the whole concept, is that it is a cohesive unit, that it's not haphazard through there. And that's why you control building types in that area. You wouldn't want, for example, you wouldn't want, right around that brewery area, those crossroads, you wouldn't want to allow for, and this is where the use comes in, you wouldn't want to allow for a single detached family unit right on, right on that area. Because it would, it wouldn't help in keeping with creating the, the, the public space that we're trying to make down there, or the place that we're trying to make. So you control that, and you bring, you control that through building type and building use.
And to Paul's point, I think that if, if I owned a home down there today, and I did not want to live by a bar-style restaurant with all the parking and that type of thing, then some of the zoning down there today, they're possibly at some, some risk of that.
Yes.
Where some cohesive thought and some direction, and I'm sure we're looking back at the 2019 comprehensive plan and including, that is our direction point, I, I was going to ask that. Then we have the opportunity to make it as cohesive as we can, I would think, right?
I, I think the plan is cohesive. I think if you start to look at the, the small area plan, I think it is a cohesive plan. I think it relates well to the adjacent, the adjacent proprietors. We, we've tried to, we've looked at some of the building types that can be, you know, near some of those single-family areas. So I think, I think we've done a relatively good job in trying to create this cohesive, cohesive area. I, I would ask, and it's some, that when we get a little bit further in the small area planning process, that we actually talk about that. But I, I would look at that smaller area plan, look at some of the concepts. I do think it's cohesive. I want to get back to a, a point that, that Paul had made. Paul had made, well, that, that's not his, that's not Paul's, where he wants to live. See, Paul would like to be somewhere in here, probably that T3 zone, right, Paul? But, yeah, T3, T3, I think Jack's out there, too. And I'm more of a guy who wants to be in the T5, T6. So, but that's a choice that we want to offer in the community. You know, part of the smaller area plan, part of the comprehensive plan, is we wanted to provide a diversity of housing types within the community. The small area plan in, in these areas allows us to do things like with single-family attached, potentially, potentially in some areas with multiple family. And really where that starts to come into play is, you, Piners itself is, is an older community. So as people get old, as people get older, what happens is that big 4,000-square-foot house might be something that's too big, that, that one acre, two acre lot might be too big. They want to build, downsize and, and stay in the same community, and move to, you know, maybe something closer that has, I can walk to, I can walk to a coffee shop, I can do all those things. What we're trying to do is, is, is trying to allow for that to occur with some of the elements of these small area plans. In concept.
I, I have a two-parter. So is it, is this definitely going forward, or is this, I mean, has this been decided? We're doing this?
I mean, we, we, when we, when we let the contract for the small area plan, we said we want to develop a, a form-based code. We still don't have to do it, but that is the idea.
And how long do you think it's going to take you to complete it?
I'm hoping to get that done here this fall. Because we've got a moratorium that's running out, and I want to, I want to make sure that we get that done before we have to extend that moratorium. Because I don't want to have to extend the moratorium, so it's all hands on deck trying to get this done.
Okay. Great.
My understanding is we were going to get small area plans for the, the two sites to look at this fall, is that correct?
That's, we wanted, it was supposed to be in, like, now, but we got, we got delayed.
Okay, and, and they may be different, you know, it's not one size fits all, there's two different plans possibly. Now, they will incorporate, to your knowledge, the form-based code required to implement that plan?
After we get the, the small area plans approved themselves. Because you don't want to, you don't want to really jump on creating the form-based code before you get the plan approved.
Okay, so let's, let's take the Village Place area. Assuming that we get a small area plan for that area that talks to, you know, mixed commercial slash residential and so forth, and different types, and it lays out on a map usually what could happen, but it doesn't say this has to happen this way.
Correct.
And we, along with council, say, that's fine, it looks good, like, we think that's the vision that we want to go to. Then we contract to develop, or we develop ourself, form-based codes that implement that plan, is that correct?
Part of our contract with, with them is to develop the form-based code. So we have to get the, we have to get to the final report. We're in, we're in phase three right now. Phase three is the development and approval of the final report. The final report and plans, those are used then to generate and develop the form-based code.
Well, I mean, will we have any say in generation of the form-based code? I'm always concerned about telling a contractor or consultant, here, just go do something, and we get it back, and it doesn't seem to work always. That's our experience in the last five years, to tell you the truth.
Well, there's some assumption that staff is not involved with this, that, that they haven't been listening to the public input, that they're not looking at what's the adopted plan. So, so if we have an adopted plan, and this adopted plan is, is pretty, is pretty prescriptive, I mean, there's still some general realities in it, but we use that to work on phase two, which would be the form, which would be the form-based code. So we're bringing forward the form-based code based, based on the concepts that are in the, that are in the plans themselves.
I guess we'll have to wait and see, but what will the plan say? What will it look like? I mean, it's going to say, these, these, these streets, these parcels, these, this acreage should be developed a percentage, commercial, a percentage residential. I mean, how, how is it going to specify all of that? Yeah, it tends to show, show me pictures of, you know, of lots and what's going to be on each different lot.
It shows square footages and things like that, shows where, it shows where we want pedestrian open space, so it has all those elements in, in here.
Okay.
So I think, I, I mean, from a planning standpoint, I, you know, we're moving forward based on some of the concepts in here as, as they've been amended or as we've modified based on my conversations with the, with the village council.
Okay, well, it'll be interesting how to translate that into codes.
You.
That's why you're paying the big bucks here.
That is why we hired a consultant to do this as part of the process, somebody who actually has experience in developing these things. I, I haven't developed a form-based code myself, I know the concepts, I know the vision, kind of what I've heard through the public, and comp plan these plans. So you're, you're going to, when we get the form-based code, that will go through the, the same process that we go through for any type of code, code amendment. So there's going to be, again, a very public process. This is not the, something that's, we're going to try and slide through, because I knew that would never happen.
No, I, I know that will happen. I was just trying to understand what, what we're going to get on the first go-around, and it sounds like we're going to get a conceptual description of what this general area will contain on either a percentage or what it might look like basis, is that correct?
Or, there'll be more flesh than, than is in, in the Public Workshop Number Two document. So it's going to, so it'll be more in-depth than here. It'll be getting at more of what you're talking about.
Right.
For area ratios, you know, things like that.
I guess we'll, we'll see it eventually.
Are there going to be some zoning changes involved as well?
I, I can, I can only, we could. No, you, you will get, when you say eventually, it's, it is, we're working quickly to get, not quick, I mean, we're working efficiently to try and get it done. We've been delayed because we were delayed and COVID didn't help, and then we were delayed with, because we were working on getting some information back to the consultant. So, you know, we too, when, when we're looking at things, we have to send comments back to the consultant. Sometimes we can't get them back as quickly as we'd like to because everything else that's coming around here. But they're, they're currently working on it. So it's, when we say eventually, eventually is, is very soon. So we're hoping to get it very soon. I will contact them and see what, see where they are on their schedule right now, but they are working on it. Because they, they also need to end this project so they can move on to another project at some point, because they're consultants and they need to move on to another place. Jeremy?
Yes, sorry. Are there going to be some zoning changes involved in this process as well?
The, the idea is the form-based code is going to be probably, it's going to supplement, supplant, the zoning that's under it. So if we do it as, as an overlay, or how we write that, yes, there'll be, there'll have to be some type of zoning change. Because there's no way we can implement the form-based code without a zoning change.
But we'll be able, will that be done all at once on the plan process, to where you guys, well, the staff will recommend multiple zoning changes at once, and then?
It might just be one overlay. So we, we, we don't, we don't know what it looks like at this point. So we're still too early. We, I'm trying to get to the final report, so that's after the final report. So, so as I know a little bit more, I can, I can let you guys know. I just don't, I, I don't know what, what that looks like at this point.
I think that's, that's the issue that we ran into on Highway Five with the subdivision. It, you know, it fit what we had in place currently, but it doesn't fit the plan for that area.
That's correct.
So getting ahead of it, yeah.
Which is, which is also the reason why we enacted the moratorium.
Yeah, exactly.
To allow us some time to develop these plans. Now, when they did the New Core plan, I think they had a moratorium, and then they extended it, do you remember, Jack, two, three, four times or something like that? I do, I don't want to do that. I really don't. Because I don't want to, I, I want to get the, the form-based code adopted, so we, we kind of take them out of limbo over there and allow them to, you know.
Now, the cottages on Five were approved, right?
Correct.
So if this is, are they grandfathered if this goes in?
They're done, I mean, that's.
Okay, so, yeah, it's up to the contractor whether or not he wants to invest a couple dollars for sidewalks and lamp posts.
Oh, he has to. I mean, he's putting sidewalks in because it's a requirement of our code.
Okay.
But if you also look at that, the P and Z required them a condition to put a pedestrian easement, and they've linking that pedestrian easement from this development to the small area plan. So I think that, you know, just that, just that one little condition helps connect these two neighborhoods as they develop in the future.
Okay, thanks.
I'm down to just one question. I do think this is pretty interesting. At first blush, seems to accomplish a lot that the village wants to maintain. So existing buildings, I'm thinking about the, the Rattlesnake area, how does, when you overlay a form-based code, how does that affect, like, structures there that are privately owned that are, fit the current zoning but don't fit the new form-based zoning? I mean.
Like it does any other time we make a zoning change, it'll be, they'll probably come non-conforming, we'll have some provisions for allowing adjustments to non-conforming buildings. So it's the same concept.
Do we have any examples of towns and locations where you can go and see how they implemented, and, and see the result of implementation of form-based codes?
I don't know, I don't know.
I know there's lots of examples, there's Davidson and Asheville and so forth and so on. But I mean, can you, is there a place you can physically go see a neighborhood that say, this was only developed because of form-based codes? Or it conforms to the form-based codes we put in place? I mean, are there any examples?
Sure, I'll have to find some.
It'll be interesting, I think sooner or later someone's going to ask you that question in addition to me.
A couple of them would be, you have Knightdale, Wake Forest, Wendell, Jacksonville. Raleigh has even used form-based code elements recently with their massive ordinance rewrite.
Well, what you, what, what Jack is looking for is actual development. So if we go to Google Street View, take a Google Street View and say, this was developed under a form-based code.
Yeah, or actually, if it's within just driving distance, go see physically the results of implementation of a form-based code.
Well, let's all go up Asheville.
And why it's so much better than what we're normally doing.
Blue Hill District is form-based code, that's a small subsection of.
And you just, you know, think about that and maybe get a list and.
Let's go to, excellent.
Field trip.
We, we, we have the ordinance examples, which we can find all over the place, but to actual, I like field trips.
Being is believing sometimes, you know.
No, I get it, I get it. We need to find that.
Could you pick, um, one of the form-based code places to visit with a good microbrewery?
Asheville, the Haywood District.
Most important.
All right. I hope this was illuminating a little bit, at least.
I think some, one of the points you possibly were trying to get to is, is some of the next steps. Do you mind just kind of let us know what we should expect from the next steps?
Well, then, as soon as I know when we're going, going to have a Public Workshop Number Three scheduled, I'll, I'll let you, I'll let everybody know that well in advance when I start to get that. That's really, the next step is, I need, we need to see what that, that final product is. I anticipate, again, that we are a little bit behind schedule, so we've got to be getting very close. I haven't interfaced with, I haven't interfaced with the consultant real recently, so I'll just have to look. Once, once I know what, when that public workshop is scheduled, that is the next major date to watch for. After we see that, if everybody is, they loves everything, we'll just move forward with it, which I'm hoping. Then I can proceed quickly to P and Z and council review for adoption. Once that happens, then the next step in the process would be to work, would be to get the form-based code adopted. Tail end.
Forgive me for, so we did a exercise in the Fair Barn where we had the DOT poll.
Yep.
And, yeah, and so that's, well, I think we used a lot to develop our 2019 comprehensive plan. I, I don't know if we still have those, but that's, to me, and, and my thought is a good representation about what our community wanted. I, I couldn't find anything better than that to really understand and try to understand what our, you know, community was desiring. So I, I don't know if that's reviewable or anything as we move forward, but I think that's an important piece to that, as well as 2019 comprehensive plan.
Well, you've got to remember that we, we, this process started with the comprehensive plan. So it started with the concepts in there. Now we've funneled all the way down to ground level, and we've had the public workshops, we've had the surveys, we've had the stakeholders. So it's all meant to, it's all, that was all incorporated. Now we're ultimately leading up to that final plan, we're going to go right back through the process. We're going to, we're going to, and, and we're hoping that, you know, we know that the, the consultant's been listening to the public input, looking at the comprehensive plan, that that final product incorporates all those elements, so, so adoption, acceptance should be, we're hoping, should be eased.
Awesome. So the next step, really, for staff is really the workshop. I mean, we should be, workshop.
And participate. I know, I've seen some of you, I've seen some of you in action, Jack, I've seen in action. So I have, so just participate. We need participation, we really do. I mean, we're getting good participation, but, you know, first one, we had 100-plus people participating, second one was down to 60-some. We do the engagement, we send out, we send out notifications. We did a code read, so if, if you're in our system, we put out 6,000 phone calls asking for participation. So we, it's not for lack of trying that we aren't good, but we are getting good participation. We have gotten good participation and comments.
Staff that we need to know on this subject?
No, I'm wearing out, so.
No, I think, I think we're throwing them at you today. Thanks for standing up there and taking them.
No, this is, you know, council is usually three hours, so this is what, was it an hour and a half?[1751.33]
Okay.
Kidding.
All right, so are we prepared to move on to the next topic in the agenda, or do we want to, is there any more questions? Because this is good information. I thought this was a great discussion. Okay, all right. All right, so with that, let's go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the update on future board business from staff.
I know, I'll take that agenda item. I won't spend much time on it, but I do want to give you guys an update. Obviously, we took last month off, and we had an opportunity at the meeting today to introduce form-based code in, in great detail. So thank you to Darren and Alexandria for taking that agenda item and doing a, a good job on giving you guys a, an overview, and get you guys to thinking about how that can, can come about with our small-area planning, and how maybe we can meet some of these visions and goals of the 2019 comprehensive plan. But really, what I want to do is let you guys know what we're going to be looking at next month for the October meeting. I believe it's October 7th. And we will have a public hearing to review an application for a major subdivision. And this is a by-right subdivision, so something we do have practice with very recently. You may recall, we've had two of these in the past, a little, just a little over a year, one being the subdivision near the lake area in the ETJ. It was kind of known as the Floydway subdivision. The other one in the Pinhurst South area, which has been known as the Pinhurst South cottages. So this, this property is located off Linden Road, it's across from the Cotswold development, has, was originally platted, just about nine lots or so, as Hollycrest, so that's what we're calling it. And it's to, basically to build out the, the remaining acreage there. It is in a, a public water supply watershed, so it is limited in density, once again, to a unit an acre. The base zoning is R15, so they do meet the density requirements and then some, so they're able to provide some open spaces, buffers, especially along the Linden roadside, as you can indicate on the copy of the proposed plat, the most recent dated plat that we received first of this week. TRC has been reviewing this since April, so we are finally at a point where we're ready to go for public hearing before you guys to conduct the hearing and gain additional information, consider the plat along with our staff recommendation, and make a recommendation yourself to village council on the matter. So as you see with the layout, 40 lots, related infrastructure. Of course, the, the dominating visual factor you may have in looking at the plat is that original estate lot that is a circle. So a lot of the design had to be incorporated around that circle. There, of course, there's utility service and proposed to come in for public water and sewer, stormwater measures that shown there on the plat. And we've finally gotten to the point where we're just going to bring it forward for you guys. And keep in mind, again, this is an administrative review, so it's not like a legislative decision such as a zoning map or text amendment, nor is it a quasi-judicial review, like hearing, I'm having hearings on appeals or variances. So that's what's coming before you next month. I wanted to give you guys an opportunity to start looking at it, digesting it a little bit, before the meeting agenda will be posted, which will have any other supplemental material that we need from the applicant, and of course, our detailed staff report and analysis. So heads up, be ready in October, and hopefully we'll have a, a pretty good, be a good strength for our membership, so you guys can all provide good input for that as we go through. And for those who aren't in attendance, I will be able to send out a PDF on this, so they'll have opportunity to review ahead of time, too. If you guys give me a head nod, if you would like a digital version as well to have on your own. All right. It, it is in our ETJ. It abuts our corporate limits. Cotswold was annexed about circa 2013, I believe, and, and it gets a little, it was that, that early? I, I remember seeing some other documentation. They may have had a, another area that, that got included in. The corporate limit boundary gets a little odd there, I will say, on the west side of Linden Road. But there are some of the, the residential lots that this proposed subdivision abuts on the eastern side are kind of those of the farther west of the, what we say, the lake area. So they are not, at this point, interested in petition for voluntary annexation. So it would stay in the ETJ. If, if they, if, if the property owner ever does petition for that, but right now they indicate they are not interested. They are not required to, no. And, and right now, they're proposing for all the, the road network to be private. If they were wanting that to be owned and maintained by the village, then we would obviously only accept it if it was in our corporate limits.
Any conditions being requested at this point?
They, they are going to request one waiver, it appears, and that's just to try to shore up any inconsistencies with the engineering standards specifications manual, and that's to allow for the valley curb and not the full curb and gutter. But concrete, which it is a concrete valley gutter, is an approved detail that we have for our roads. Also is, you know, the, the property does have a, a gatehouse and does have a gate that is never used. Yeah, we've been back there. Darren made us drive down there not long after he started, because he wanted to see what it was. And we, we left underwhelmed, but it may change in, in the coming next couple of years or so. But that is the only requested waiver, and that is not a waiver of the PDO, but of the ESSM, which is something they can't ask for.
Cotswold was recent. I thought you were thinking of Claritin Gardens, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Which is right next to it.
Yeah, just down the road, yeah.
Alex, did you say 40-acre lot with 40 homes?
Yes.
Okay. How would that work out to one per acre, if you take into account all the, the roads and-
The, the density requirement is based on the total tract area.
Okay, got it, thank you.
So it looks like the data is 40.68 acres total.
Lots appear to be a little over half an acre to three quarters.
And again, it's the R15 district, which, you know, minimum 15,000.
So it's, it's maxed out, they couldn't put another one in there?
Correct.
What else, sir?
That's all I have.
Any other business from anybody on the board? No business, no discussion? I, I have been asked to make kind of a general statement, kind of regarding our preparation for the meetings and attendance. Just kind of a general reminder for us all, that we've all each made a commitment towards our participation on the board. So just make sure that we're considering that in our attendance and participation. And, and it's maybe something that we can get into the details with in, in the future in an upcoming meeting. And also, a good opportunity to participate would be the upcoming, just kind of a point that I've been asked to mention to us as a board, so, that's it. So if, no other comment, no other business to discuss, I'm going to guess that we don't have any public comments. So I'm going to go ahead and-
No public?
So no public comments, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Or hang on a second, let me, let me back that up in my inexperience here, and go ahead and mention that our next meeting date is October 7th, 2021. Is there any, anybody who knows now that they will not be in attendance or anything? Okay, sorry to shift gears on you now. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm moving to adjourn the meeting.
Motion by Matt, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Jack, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.